Batavia City Council for Monday, August 5th, 2013. Would you all please rise for a brief invocation, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we, as always, ask for guidance and blessing, as we undertake to perform the duties of the City Council of Batavia. We are ever mindful that we are here in a very enticing and valuable moment of community history, and we are always wanting to make sure that we are keeping the community on the right road of progress toward many great things for us in the future. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community and from throughout the United States of America who are so ably defending our liberties on foreign soil and defense of the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and their guidance. Tonight, we ask for direction and guidance as we react and perform our duties and vote on the various issues before us, knowing that wisdom and guidance is always crucial and that as we make these decisions, we do so with the very best wishes and desires for Batavia in mind in the future. We ask for all these blessings. Amen.
Do we have a moment of silence for former Alderman Schmitz?
He just took the words right out of my mouth.
You were gonna go to the pledge, so...
Okay.
You were planning on it.
Anyway, I was going to do a tribute to him after we started the meeting, but we will go ahead. Alderman Clark has asked that we do a moment of silence in honor of retired Alderman Tom Schmitz, who passed away, and that will be followed here by, under item six, I intend to do a little comment about him, so... Amen. Alderman ATAC, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Pass the city clerk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Alderman Chanset is absent. Alderman Wolf is absent. Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Holman?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Vasiliyan?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Alderman McFadden is absent.
So we have eleven of the fourteen members of the City Council present accounting for us, so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business.
And I believe Alderman Chanset, are you with us?
I am in need...
So, we need a motion to allow for Alderman Chanset to attend the meeting via the telephone for this evening.
Some move.
Second. Move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks, for the approval of Alderman Chanset to attend the meeting by telephone. Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Vote is eleven yes, no no's, three absent, so Alderman Chanset, you now make twelve. So, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
All right, moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Do we have anything this evening?
Not to my knowledge.
To my knowledge. Okay, moving to item number five, which is presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Would you present this, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the joint committee of the hold minutes for July 2nd, July 9th, 2013; B, the historic preservation commission minutes for June 18th and July 8th, 2013. Approvals: A, July 19th, 2013 payroll in the amount of $728,572.14; and August 2nd, 2013 payroll, an amount of $760,964.39; B, the August 2nd, 2013 accounts payable check register, $3,482,303.99; C, the City Council minutes for July 1st, 2013; D, approval of Batavia pantry Class B liquor license for 929 East Wilson Street; E, resolution 13-91-R, authorizing execution of master service engineering agreement with Rempe Sharp &amp; Associates, Inc.; F, ordinance 13-32 granting a franchise extension for cable television in light of pending negotiation for cable franchise renewal. I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Move by Alderman Sparks, second by Alderman ATAC, for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Motion approved, twelve yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item three, which is matters from the public. Before I recognize the public, as I had indicated at the beginning of the meeting, I would like to take a couple of minutes and just pay some words of tribute to retired Alderman Tom Schmitz, who, as all of you know, passed away since our last meeting of the City Council. Tom, as we all know, represented quite ably the Fourth Ward on the northeast side of Batavia on this body for a number of years, and he is certainly remembered from a variety of fronts. Probably one that jumps out at everybody is his sense of humor and the way that he could sometimes make light of sometimes kind of difficult situations, but he always had the ability to be very serious when he needed to be, but also to take life with a little bit of humor and a little sidebar when it seemed appropriate. And he always did that with the utmost of concern and taste, and I always really admired his sense of humor from that perspective. The one thing I remember fondly about Tom was, is that he came to Batavia City Council, and he may have been the only person that I can find in memory that did this, in that he was a member of the Batavia Board of Education for a number of years before he got elected to the City Council. And he was on the school board, and then he made the decision to retire from that group. And in the meantime, his son, Tim, had gotten himself elected as Third Ward Alderman of the city of Batavia. And while he was serving in that position, he got himself further elected to the Illinois General Assembly, of which we all know he is still there, serving most ably. And while he was at the Illinois General Assembly, when he got elected to the Illinois General Assembly, I remember he came in here shortly thereafter and told me he had been given an edict from the leadership down in Springfield that they didn't want him serving in two offices at the same time, and so therefore they were asking that he not seek reelection. So, he made that decision very quickly, that he wasn't going to seek reelection as Alderman, but then quickly thereafter, his father announced that he was going to seek election as Fourth Ward Alderman. And so, it was normally in politics, it's always the son following the father, or in here, it was kind of a reverse situation where we had the father following the son as far as his service on the Batavia City Council. So, those events were kind of unique to Batavia history, but I think they should be certainly noted and remembered with great fondness and appreciation because certainly between the father and son, their service on the City Council was most admirable and creative and supportive of the community. I wrote a short tribute to Tom, which I included in this coming issue of Neighbor's Magazine and the Mayor's message, so you'll read a little bit more about him in the days ahead. But, you know, he is one of those people who I think, as long as all of us are sitting here, who certainly served with him, we will always kind of fondly remember him being a part of this body and the contributions that he made. A couple of observations I would make about his direct service with the City Council. One was, is that he, I think from the moment he came on the City Council, he was a member of the Governmental Services Committee, and so as a result of that, he got to be involved in all the budget discussions from the very first moment he got here. And eventually, as things unfolded, because he was here for the length of time he was, he ended up ascending to the chairmanship of the Governmental Services Committee. In the last couple of years he was here, he was in that position, and he was the one that oversaw the budget hearings and discussions that we had. And it was during his tenure that we were able to roll back the tax rate to some of the lowest we'd ever had it in the history of the city of Batavia. I think at one point in time, we had it down to about, the municipal tax rate for the city was down to fifty-six cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation, which in the, by example, in the early 1980s, that rate had been up to a dollar five. So, we'd almost cut the tax rate from the city's perspective almost in half. And you think Tom, you know, he didn't wear it on his sleeve, but he certainly took a lot of pride in the fact that we had watched the budget and watched the finances and done some creative things here, so that we had been able to do that at a time when most other local governments were raising their tax rates, and as a result, the corresponding increase in property taxes that many people were feeling. And so, I can remember several times him commenting to me that when some people would come and complain about taxes in general, that he said, you know, he didn't want to, you know, put it out there too heavily, but that, you know, if you looked at our city's tax rate in comparison to most of the neighboring communities, you know, we were many times at least half of what many of the others, and some of them are more than half as much again as ours. So, he took some pride in that. I don't say that he didn't boast about it, but he certainly was knowledgeable that that was occurring during his time as Finance Chairman or Governmental Services Chairman. And, you know, today, we still, while we're not quite at fifty-six cents, we're still at the low end of all the municipalities in the Chicagoland area as far as our municipal tax rates, and I think Tom would continue to hold that credit or take some pride in the fact that Batavia continues to do that. The other thing that I will tell you while I talk about his conservative nature on finances, he did take a lot of credit in some of the building programs that went on while he was here, specifically the reconstruction of the Wilson Street Bridge. And he took a lot of appreciation of the fact that on that one, we were able, because of, you know, the moons kind of aligned for Batavia at that point in time, and we had a lot of support at the federal and state level, and at the end of the day, we were able to rebuild the Wilson Street Bridge, and eighty-seven percent of the cost of it was paid for by the state and federal governments. And so, the taxpayers of Batavia only carried about thirteen percent of the burden of the Wilson Street Bridge. So, I think he took some appreciation that that was able to be accomplished. And the other thing I know that he took some appreciation in was the fact that we were able to pass the sales tax referendum in 2005 for the half-cent sales tax increase with the pledge that the money would be used for public enhanced service improvements in the community. Specifically, we indicated the first thing we would do would be replace the two fire stations on both the east side and the west side. And he took great appreciation, I know, in seeing those fire stations built and the designs that went into them and the service capabilities that they now offer and the long-term impacts that they would have, and the fact that, again, like many other things, the cost to build those was not put on the backs of the property taxpayer, it is a sales tax that is paid by not only Batavia residents, but anybody who's in town doing business and buying things in the Batavia community. So, Tom's hand in all those decisions I just talked about was a very real motivating factor, and I just wanted tonight to give some appreciation to somebody who really came down here and quietly and, you know, in his own inevitable style, really did some stuff that really helped Batavia, I think, gain some ground forward, and I just wanted to pay some words of tribute to Tom Schmitz tonight, and also note that you'll read more in Neighbor's Magazine at the next edition. Does anybody in the council wish to make any comments? All right, well, this is public comment period. Does anybody in the audience tonight wish to address the City Council on anything that's not okay? All right, we will go then to item number seven, and if you permit me, I'm gonna come out to the podium for a minute. I'm pleased to introduce to you Alec Bauer, who is one of Batavia's newest Eagle Scouts. And as all of you know, since I became mayor in 1981, I have tried as best I can to attend all the Eagle Scout ceremonies that we have in Batavia with, we have five troops that at some point in time contribute an Eagle Scout to the scouting program, and they always have a ceremony for them. And I'm not always able to make every ceremony. Now, this past weekend, there were two, and I was able to make both of them. In Alec Bauer's case, his was a week ago Sunday, and it worked out, I was not able to attend that ceremony. So, those of you who have been around here a while will remember when we, and I haven't been able to make the ceremony, I invite the scout to come to the next City Council meeting, and we pass the proclamation here officially, they get to be on TV, and it's a little bit different fanfare than the Eagle Scout Ceremony or Court, but I think that it certainly pays honor to him. So, what I would like to do is read the following proclamation to you, and this was the one that we read at all of them, but I always begin the Eagle Scout presentation by noting that my experience in Batavia with the Eagle Scout program has been that when you become an Eagle Scout, you generally mark yourself as somebody that you need to, the community should watch, because the success rate in the career contributions that the former Eagle Scouts of Batavia that I've been able to witness over the years has been very significant. I've seen some of them become graduates of our military academies, I've been to Washington, DC, and seen them working in congressional offices, I've met some of them who have risen to become presidents of the companies that they later go to work for. So, the Eagle Scout program is something that generally marks somebody for success. So, Alec, tonight, I think we're looking to you in that same vein. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the awarding of the rank of Eagle Scout is a special honor and privilege that is realized by only a select and limited number of Boy Scouts of America who strive to attain this coveted recognition. And whereas the city of Batavia is proudly honored to be the home of Alec Quentin Bauer, who on Monday, August 5th, 2013, is being applauded for his personal dedication to duty, his commitment to the elusive goal of so many Boy Scouts, and his determination to be the very best scout that he could be. And whereas by earning and attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, Alec Quentin Balden Bauer has brought great appreciation and recognition to his scout troop, the adult leadership within his troop, and his fellow peers within the scouting program of Batavia, as well as the members of his immediate family. And whereas the members of the City Council have long saluted those individuals of the greater Batavia community who have gone the extra mile of determination to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, and who by realizing this goal are now recognized as future leaders of our city, state, and nation, as they put into place the practices of valuable lessons learned on the road to realizing the Eagle Scout rank. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, Illinois, by the signing of this official proclamation, do hereby commend and congratulate Alec Quentin Bauer on earning the grand honor of becoming Batavia's newest Eagle Scout. In the further appreciation of the hard work and bright future which Alec Bauer has duly earned, I do hereby officially proclaim that Monday, August 5th, 2013, shall be known throughout all of Batavia as Alec Quentin Bauer Day." Congratulations. When I... I think as we're at the meeting here, and this is an official document, I need to have a motion by somebody to approve it.
So moved.
Have a motion and second. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Okay, it's official now. Alec, congratulations on behalf of people of Batavia. Give you that. Would you like to make any comments?
No.
All right, well, thanks for coming down, and again, best wishes in the future. Okay, item number eight is appointment of paid-on-call firefighters. Chief Daiki, please.
Good evening. We have a new paid-on-call to be sworn in tonight. There's two on the agenda, but one of them couldn't make it, so Frank Shimpf is not here tonight. But we do have Chris Cerber. He's a firefighter, too, an EMT, and he used to be a firefighter on the Eastern Prairie Fire Protection District down near Springfield. So, Chris, if you could come forward, please.
No one told me about it.
If you want to join me up here in the center of the room? If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Chris Cerber.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
The state of Illinois.
And do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform the duties.
I will perform the duties.
Of paid-on-call firefighter.
Of paid-on-call firefighter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Okay, moving to item number nine, which is motion to waive formal bidding for cleaning and televising sanitary sewer lines. Alderman Clark, do you have this one?
Yes, I'm gonna talk about nine and ten, they go together, but nine has to happen first. So, this is a resolution as part of the city's commitment to ensure the sewer collection system is properly maintained and working as designed, the city began budgeting funds in 2012 to begin rehabilitation of the collection system infrastructure. In 2013, the city intends to clean and inspect approximately 25,000 square feet of sewer pipe ranging from eight inches to thirty-six inch diameters in the Highland, Sub Basin, and Cleveland Avenue interceptor, along with the inspection of the interrelated network of manholes. The intention of these inspections will lead the city toward a sewer pipeline rehabilitation project where the pipeline problems will be situated, oh, they'll be lined to a new condition. Maintenance of these lines is difficult, and special consideration is being given to the inspection of approximately thirty-five sewer laterals, residential connections to main lines in the Highland, Sub Basin due to the ongoing root intrusion problems. Residents will be notified ahead of schedule before the inspections, before start, people start walking around in their backyard. So, there'll be door hangers when they'll be in that area, so the residents will be aware of what's going on and what we're doing. Our engineer had gone out to get quotes for the work, since they knew exactly what qualifications were required, and we received quotes via that, so that is the reason we are waiving formal bidding, since we didn't do the bidding and did the quotes. We're using that methodology, but we have to waive the formal bidding on this project because of the quote process. So, I will make a motion that we waive formal bidding on this project for Resolution 1392-R.
Second. Move by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien, to waive formal bidding on the sanitary sewer and cleaning and televising contract. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding is approved, twelve yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, Alderman Clark?
All right, for Resolution 1392-R, Sheridan Sewer and Plumbing of Bedford Park, Illinois, was chosen as the quote to go with for amount not to exceed $102,000. And so, I make a motion, we approve Resolution 1392-R.
Second. Move by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien, for the approval of Resolution 13-92-R, awarding the sanitary sewer and cleaning and televising contract to Sheridan Plumbing. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item number eleven, which is Resolution 13-102-R, authorizing 2013 budget amendment in the amount not to exceed $22,200 for City Hall improvements. Who's got this one?
Alan's got it, but who's the co-chair of City Service?
That'd be me.
You've got it.
Well, I wasn't at the last meeting, J-Cow meeting, but we are looking to do some work on City Hall to, let me pull up something here.
Do you want me to...
Improvements were not budgeted for, we went through a whole process to do some work to cut the, for security reasons, and some things were added to this and they were not budgeted, so we're looking to add to the budget improvements by $22,200. So, I will make a motion for approve, to approve Resolution 13-102-R, authorizing budget amendment to fund 48-48 City Hall capital improvements.
Clark? We have a motion by Alderman O'Brien, second. Alderman Serone, any discussion?
Just to clarify one thing, this, the majority of this is for life safety upgrades for the third floor, something we have to do.
That is correct, thank you.
And we want to, obviously, as part of that, we want to make the third floor as secure an environment as we can. One of the issues we've faced in the past is, is that, as all of us know, unfortunately in Batavia now, we have several people who are, I guess classify themselves as homeless residents, and we've had the experience here where on some nights, they have entered the building and somehow or another worked their way through back hallways or upstairs through back stairs, and we've found them enjoying the comforts of the couches up on the stage in the Albright Theater. And so, we've tried to, which can be a kind of a dangerous situation, especially if they choose to start to smoke up there. So, we want to make sure that we got this building as, potentially as secure as we can, and I know some of this work will help us kind of further solidify that particular situation. Any other discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vasiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
Motion's approved, twelve yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to item number twelve, which is Resolution 13-101-R, authorizing execution of independent contractor agreement for economic development services. Who's got this one?
Government service, but Bill's gonna take it.
McGrath?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. With Resolution 1311, as you said, authorize execution of an independent contractor agreement for economic development services with Mr. Chris Aiston. Chris has, in terrific experience, has worked with the Tri-Cities and King County, has worked with all manners of tip agreements, has worked on very significant tip redevelopment agreements, has worked with developers, worked in marketing, both retail downtown as well as industrial spaces. We're very lucky to obtain somebody like this, instead of having to bring somebody in, and teach them about it, bring somebody in from outside the area, and we could learn. Last year, or actually several years ago, in part of the economic downturn, one of the strategies that we tried to employ is that when we look to see, or when we decide to need a city service, we see if we can fill that by means of a contract with somebody instead of hiring an employee, and we've done that same thing here, and we're saving a significant amount of money, as well as avoidance of some expenses and liabilities that come out of hiring an employee. As the memo says, Chris is going to be working under the direction of Jason Bager. For the most part, the priorities that Jason set up are business retention and expansion, economic development, marketing, attraction, economic development credit analysis, economic development finance programs, and real estate development reuse. We've already talked about setting up a meeting with the Chamber and, and Main Street, you have to know a lot about economic development here in the city. It's certainly a win-win situation, and as I say, the strategy of bringing out a consultant instead of a full-time employee is something that we've adopted. It also gives us the opportunity, if things don't work out, to terminate, simply terminate the contract, which is easier to do with a consultant than it is with an employee. And if we break the contract, we see we do have that right to terminate the agreement on certain notice, so, unless anybody has any other questions that you must address the situation, other than say, we are, at the moment, the plan that we talked to the City Council about was to finance about a third of this cost of this consultancy from the TIF because of such a significant period, such a significant amount of time and energy is going to be spent within, there are two TIF districts, redevelopment issues, starting with, it'll have something to do with the Walgreens, certainly the Baptist Church will be a significant project that we're working on.
How much of questions, Alderman Brown?
I guess, I certainly support the position of an economic development person, and I think we've got a very good candidate here for this. I do question a little bit about the TIF funding on it, some of the emails that have been flying around, which I'm very grateful to have, bring some very good points out about the purpose of TIF, what, where it can be used and where it can't be used. I think, I understand Bill's rationale, and you know, the Baptist Church is going to take up a lot of the time, and other areas in the TIF districts are going to take up a lot of the time, but yet, I would hope a very large amount of his time is going to be spent elsewhere in the city. We've got a very big city here, and I guess it really kind of boils down to my way of thinking that the TIF is intended for specific projects within the TIF district, and I don't see where salaries qualify for that expense. So I question that. I have no problem hiring this individual, I think maybe he should be, his salary should be funded otherwise, say through the general fund as everyone else. I don't like the idea of spending the money outside of the TIF district that's being funded by the TIF district.
Alderman Stark?
To that point, when I looked at this and his position, I looked at it as more of a consultant-type position than a true employee position, and so we've employed consultants for any number of things, whether it's design, services, you know, all kinds of things across the board, and that's come out of TIF funding, so that's why when I looked at this, I thought it, to me, made sense that we'd fund it out of TIF.
Having given the suggestion, just so you know, because I think the important thing is to get this body here, there are two different kinds of TIFs. There are TIFs that are project, that are single project TIFs, so for example, the Baptist Church could be a separate TIF. Batavia's TIFs are not those kinds of TIFs. Our redevelopment project area covers most of the downtown, and if you look through the redevelopment project area and the redevelopment plan, you'll see an area of projects, most of which Chris would be working on. Having said that, from now until the end of the year, 33% of what we'd be paying on the contract is about $6,500. What I would suggest is that if you feel should be brought on board, that you award the contract, and we could certainly talk about for 2014, either, I don't know, either rearranging how we pay for that $6,500 in 2013, but yeah, take a little more time and discuss where it should come from for the 2014 budget. The TIF statute does specifically call for the hiring of professional consultants, as long as they're working on things within the redevelopment project area. It also specifically calls up marketing for sites in the redevelopment project area to prospective businesses, developers, and investors. It also specifically calls out to financial consulting services, so I think on that at least there's enough to get through with this now, and then if you want to talk about spending policies, you can refer to those texts in 2014, I understand, Dave, we all have discussed them.
I would have, I would have no problem in hiring this guy and signing a contract with him, but I think we, it shouldn't come out of TIF at this point. Pay him out of general funds and get him on board and get him going. I think it's just, we're crossing a fine line here as to whether or not he can be paid out of TIF. He's not working specifically on a TIF project or in a TIF area. And I think there needs to be more discussion. I sent a couple emails to Bill, we played email tag a little bit, on, you know, what kind of a budget is he going to have to work with? That's very, you know, is he going to be sitting here with his feet up on the desk collecting a salary, or is he going to be spending a bunch of money on mailings and literature and going to different conventions and things like that, you know? So there is a little bit of a budget left over from what Meredith had when Meredith was here, so there's money in the budget this year for him to work with, but certainly by the two, when we come to the 2014, I think that's when we can have some real heart-to-heart discussion on what kind of budget he's going to have. I'm in favor of it, as you know, Mayor, I've said before, we should be spending money on advertising, we should be spending money on promotions, so I'm certainly going to support a budget for this individual, but I just think for, right now, we should, we should bring him on with the, with the contract, with being paid out of general funds, not a-
Want to make a motion then, that we approve this without using the TIF funds? So moved. Second. Well, just so we have a understanding amongst the council.
Well, I'd like to have the discussion, you know, just came up, I, at least, count the city attorney giving opinion and take a look at it, because everybody's just shooting from the hip, I'm voting for the statute, and I think that you'll find that many, many cities do this, so I, it's up to you.
I just, my question is, why are we even voting on this now? I mean, it never came to committee, has it? And so what, I mean, isn't that-
There's been, there's been discussion at the committee about hiring an economic development person.
May I finish, may I just finish? I mean, I brought up when Meredith left, I supported you, I mean, I support, we need someone for economic development to bring businesses into our town, absolutely, but don't we all think maybe it would have been nice to discuss this in committee where we can get into the budget and, a budget for this gentleman, maybe vet him a little bit, I don't know, just, we all have our discussion, I mean, that's, I just, more comfortable, I mean, we're shooting from the hip, but, I mean, you may have exchanged a couple of emails with Bill, but all of us are somewhat in the dark with that.
The focus, I think, should be on person, job, the families that are doing this as a consultant, but if we're being funded as an employee, it wouldn't be going to committee at all, it would be, Jason would hire him, so that's why we took it straight to, took it straight to business side of department, so it's a, you know, a hire that you authorized, but whatever your pleasure is.
The reason we're voting is because you got a contract here. Otherwise, he'd have just been hired and been in business.
And that's all well and good, but again, I mean, we have, there are discussions that people, I think, at this table have questions about, like the budget, and just, I mean, I don't know, I mean, so, so say the guy does his job, I mean, you like to hire someone for some longevity, and the guy is not up to doing what our expectations are, then we just cut him loose, that's not very fair of us. So I just like to have had a discussion, I mean, maybe I just want to discuss too much, but, I don't know, I don't know what anyone else feels regarding discussing it.
Alderman Callahan?
I would also agree to his point of, what are our expectations of this contract for this gentleman? What is he going to be expected to do, and what is he going to, what are our measures for results for this $88,000? Your expectation should be one of the expectations out of the economic development program, and you, when we hire secretaries or administrative assistants, I don't think you have the discussions over those people. When we hire any other consultant, we have, their expectations are in the contract, the real, in terms of accountability, is the city administrator, and then it's the department head, Jason Bager, who is his direct, his direct supervisor. The accountability to the system comes from those people. Be glad to have all the discussions about what your expectations are, but I'm saying that this is kind of how it works. I think it would be to see that we're starting to build contracts for people who aren't even the department heads, or they're all appointees or anything, so it's slow down, slow down what we're trying to do.
I think it, I think both sides are right, to tell you the truth. I think, I certainly understand where staff's coming from, that this is just another person that we're hiring, but yet I think the reason why the council is so sensitive of it is because we're so all concerned about the economic development of our town, this is what we're all really working on, and so therefore, I think the council likes to have more input on this type of a person than they would a secretary. So I see both sides, I mean, I really do, I agree with both sides, and I guess the beauty of it is, I, the contract is, it's what, a one-year contract, Bill?
Yes.
So, you know, we can, we can have this, he comes highly recommended by staff, we hire staff to make the right decisions, and we hope they make the right decisions, we hold them accountable for those decisions. So it is a person that we have authorized staff to go out and find, they have found him, and because it's a contract, we have to approve the contract. Now, we can decide where we want the money to come from to pay him, and we just made a motion in that, in that effect, and we can make a motion to not hire this guy, or not, not, we can not approve the contract, but I think we should go ahead and approve the contract and have the discussion about the budget and everything as we move into the 2014 era, and we've got a budget in place, we've got some money in place, I don't know exactly how much it is, maybe you do, Bill, for what we have left over out of Meredith's budget and such, but let's get him on board and let's see what we can do, let's keep this momentum going in town while we have it.
The other thing is that we will, we will be discussing economic development as part of the strategic plan, we'll be doing that in the next couple of months, and we have, and action plans will be part of that, you absolutely have the right, if you don't like those action plans or those strategies, to tell us to come back with something different.
You know, I would add that there is somewhat of a sense of urgency going on here, because we, right now, are talking, at least that I'm aware of, with two industrial clients that are seriously looking at moving into Batavia. We've got a couple inquiries about things on downtown, and we've got some stuff moving around out on Randall Road, so we've got a lot of activity, we've got a lot of people asking a lot of questions, wanting to do something, and we really, we do need some help here. It's been, when did Meredith leave? Four months ago, five months ago? She's been gone quite a while, and we really need to have somebody plugging the hole here because we've got some, some significant things happening.
And I think we need somebody that's going to make it happen, close the deal. I hope this guy's the right guy.
Someone who definitely has a lot of experience in the Fox Valley, doing exactly what we're looking for. I think that that's, to me, this is a real coup in that he's coming to work for Batavia after just leaving St. Charles, he doesn't, we don't have to pay benefits, we don't have to do anything other than pay his consulting fees with a contract. I mean, to me, this is a no-brainer.
I like it too. I think that his experience is, is impressive, the cost to us, I think is a reasonable cost, and in just reviewing it, we do have a 90-day written notice to have it out, so that if we don't like his performance within that one-year period, we can get rid of him. I agree with Alderman Brown that I probably feel more comfortable with this being funded outside of the TIF funds, just cleaner, less controversial.
But we still got that motion laying on the floor here to vote on, so, might have Kirk call the roll on Alderman Brown's motion that we fund this outside of the TIF funds.
I was just going to ask for a clarification on that, so that the position be funded outside of TIF funds, and that all happened very quickly, who seconded that? Okay. All right. Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no-nos, two absent. Okay, well now we still have the resolution as amended for approval of 13-101-R, authorizing execution of independent contractor agreement for Economic Development Services. Any further discussion on that? John, you want to make a comment?
Yes.
If you come up and use the mic, or the, would you give us your name and address for the clerk?
My name is John Pitts, I live at 1103 Main Street, and I wanted to, I'm not against the economic development position, okay, but I have some concerns. As you know, we have, the downtown property owners are getting organized, and we're addressing the establishment of SSA 57. Whole purpose of SSA 57 is redevelopment of downtown. So, one of the issues that came up was we wanted clarification of the role of the economic development position for the city in Main Street, which we are funding at $40,000 a year, or which we will, if the SSA 57 is approved, for economic redevelopment. We don't want to see duplication of effort, and more importantly, we don't want to see conflict. We want to make sure everybody works together well, okay? So that's a concern there, and that's what I was, and I heard you talk about it, and it's going to be an issue we need to resolve. The other thing is, I was very concerned about the TIF expenditure. I appreciate schedules and lack of time and people being out of town, but at the property owners' meeting, we had, I did a presentation on TIF, and I specifically talked, I have very strong opinions about TIF and how it should be used, and I, and I do question, I, economic development, if 33% of the new position is economic development of downtown, how does that work with Main Street? Okay? The other thing I find out is, the city contributes $40,000 to Main Street, and it's out of, it's out of TIF 1 budget. Well, that would imply that's for economic development, so we need to start to coordinate that, and I understand, I mean, I don't necess, I don't agree with that, but that's just my opinion. I would just throw in that when it comes to TIF, as we found out with the over-collection, just because everyone does it, doesn't make it right, so just a little cautious about that, but also it brings to mind if, if it's a consultant-type and you can spend TIF dollars, and property owners are one of the major contributors to TIF, we pay TIF, we're in the TIF district, maybe we shouldn't have an SSA 57, maybe we should have our $40,000 come out of what we pay into TIF. It'd be the same thing as the city's doing, so, we have just a few questions. So I bring all that up, we're moving forward, when Main Street, they're having their annual retreat, they are going to draft performance criteria to use to judge their performance, and one of the things we're home for is maybe there would be something similar to that for this new position, so that we could kind of see how they balance, and what's going to happen is Main Street will bring them in, the property owners will review them, and then Main Street, the city and property owners meet, and hopefully we get resolution and move forward, but we do have some questions. So that was my, tonight, and I am concerned about TIF, and I'm concerned about the roles, which you've all expressed, so, thank you.
Thank you. Has not been a motion made.
Yeah, Alderman Brown, you need to make a motion for the approval of Resolution 13-101-R.
I move for approval of Resolution 13-101-R as amended.
I second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Vassillion, for the approval of Resolution 13-101-R, any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll. Kirk, call the roll.
And just for clarification, this is not as amended because there's no mention of the funding in 101-R. Okay. Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Resolution 13-101-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is approval of the contribution of $2,500 for the Batavia Library District's Windmill Publication Book. This came up at the government, or the joint committees' meeting last week, and seemed to be consensus agreement that we would make the $2,500 contribution. This is a small book that the library is having published, and we would have a display space in it showing off our Batavia Windmill that we have here. And they're, they've done a book that highlights all of the major windmill companies that have served in part of Batavia's history over the last few years, and they've had, this has been such a popular volume, not only in their own community, but they tell me they get a lot of requests from people all over the world, writing and asking for a copy of this thing, but they ran out. And so now, they've done some upgrades and added some more information and pictures, and they're going to do a rep publication of it. And so they've, they're asking, several agencies have agreed to make a $2,500 contribution, and it was kind of the consensus at the joint committee meeting last time was to support that. So I would ask for a motion for somebody to go ahead and endorse this.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Homan. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Resolution 13-101-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is approval of the contribution of $2,500 for the Batavia Library District's Windmill Publication Book. This came up at the government, or the joint committees' meeting last week, and seemed to be consensus agreement that we would make the $2,500 contribution. This is a small book that the library is having published, and we would have a display space in it showing off our Batavia Windmill that we have here. And they're, they've done a book that highlights all of the major windmill companies that have served in part of Batavia's history over the last few years, and they've had, this has been such a popular volume, not only in their own community, but they tell me they get a lot of requests from people all over the world, writing and asking for a copy of this thing, but they ran out. And so now, they've done some upgrades and added some more information and pictures, and they're going to do a rep publication of it. And so they've, they're asking, several agencies have agreed to make a $2,500 contribution, and it was kind of the consensus at the joint committee meeting last time was to support that. So I would ask for a motion for somebody to go ahead and endorse this.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Homan. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Resolution 13-101-R is approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Okay, moving to 13, which is approval of the contribution of $2,500 for the Batavia Library District's Windmill Publication Book. This came up at the government, or the joint committees' meeting last week, and seemed to be consensus agreement that we would make the $2,500 contribution. This is a small book that the library is having published, and we would have a display space in it showing off our Batavia Windmill that we have here. And they're, they've done a book that highlights all of the major windmill companies that have served in part of Batavia's history over the last few years, and they've had, this has been such a popular volume, not only in their own community, but they tell me they get a lot of requests from people all over the world, writing and asking for a copy of this thing, but they ran out. And so now, they've done some upgrades and added some more information and pictures, and they're going to do a rep publication of it. And so they've, they're asking, several agencies have agreed to make a $2,500 contribution, and it was kind of the consensus at the joint committee meeting last time was to support that. So I would ask for a motion for somebody to go ahead and endorse this.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Homan. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 12 yes, no no's, two absent. Okay. I guess we're going to, 15, the administrative's report. Mr. McGrath.
Thanks, Mayor. Number of things, Wilson Street project is on schedule. Expense-wise, it is at budget, except for the fact we've run into more rock excavation than was originally thought. Anywhere we work on the riverbanks, no matter how many borings you do, you don't know what's going to happen when you actually start excavating. Most of the excess rock taken out is part of the installation of the water pipes, so it'll be a water utility expense. Since we were having our TIF discussion earlier, just for everybody's benefit, what we did on Wilson Street and with River Street, we analyzed the life expectancy or the condition of the utilities, and to the extent there was actually life left in those utilities, the TIF has paid for that part of, part of the project. To the extent that there, that they have to be, to the extent that something actually has to be replaced, then that actual, that utility has to pay for that cost and not the TIF. So when we get to Houston Street, the water line has to be replaced, that'll be a water utility expense. The other added cost was that there was the retaining wall that we just talked about, as well as the relocation of the fire hydrant on, on the hill. Batavia Enterprises is appearing tomorrow night at the J-Cow for an update on the Walgreens project. I think if you were able to read the email, the Fire Marshal, the State of Illinois Fire Marshal, had proposed a rule requiring single-family residents, new ones, to be supplied with sprinklers, and sprinklers had to be retrofitted into some other buildings where there would be assembly uses. That he's rescinded that proposal and is not going to ask for that at the moment. It's really clear that the whole issue has to be discussed by a lot of the stakeholders involved in that issue. Staff's meeting with the Methodist Church regarding their, you know, plans for future land use downtown. We're still working on Prairie State project. We currently have plans to go down and meet with the board early September. We're working on the analysis, as you asked us, on the proposed land use change for the 55 acres on the east side of Kirk Road. We should have some numbers by next week. I don't think we'll be able to bring them to the J-Cow. We'll see. We're waiting for some, actually, for some data from the developer himself. We'll have an update on our efforts to sell the city-owned property at Wilson and Kirk at an executive session next week. We have a meeting this Wednesday with KDOT regarding Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway and accesses for the future, as well as, including this lot, but access up to the north, and how the project at, you know, the, the project at Fabian and Kirk Road may impact some of our properties. Peggy Colby will be presenting the financial sustainability portion of the strategic plan on August 20th. And lastly, I think you're aware, we've had a significant stormwater problem at the intersection of Main Street and Batavia Avenue where a stormwater manhole was completely washed out and created a void under the street about 10 feet deep and large enough to fill a car. So our crews have been in there, working on that. It should be totally completed by Friday with new paving, and finally, the intersection will be open. And that's all I have. And we're experimenting with the furniture rearrangement. We had some comments, and we're just looking to see how you feel about those. Tried to move these seats back so that everybody could see people working at the rostrum here, and so that the whole council could kind of interact with the staff. And any comments? I guess we can try it for a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings, and you see how you feel about it. I'm certain if we had a meeting where there was a significant public hearing or something, we would probably move the tables out and move the citizens up. So that's all I have.
Any questions, the administrator?
Bill? Yeah. On, on the Main Street and Wilson Street, what's going on, or Main Street and Batavia Avenue, what's going on over there? Are we going to be, because of what's happened, are we going to be doing any further televising up or downstream to see? I mean, this is a very, very old combination sewer there that...
Frankly, we, we really don't have the resources to tele, actually televise every stormwater pipe in the city. They try to, when they do repairs, I hate to say it, but for the most part, it's when an issue happens, it gets treated. I had the very same discussion with Gary Home. We could talk about it at the budget, to let you know kind of what, what would be required to do something like that. I think we're not happy with that. But that's, that's what I've been told at the moment. But we'll get back and, you know, respond to that, okay?
Yeah. I think we, we can talk about it more at committee level, but I think it's something, you know, it's a very old...
There you are.
Very old system, and, you know, we're trying to be proactive in other areas of town, as we just approved tonight up in the other area of the city, the northeast corner of the town. And with this being, I mean, if that, if that system fails, we're hurting, because that's a main interceptor there, right?
Yeah. Let me...
The combination sewer in that area along all of Main Street was televised in 2011. So the actual mainline sewers have been televised, and we know the condition of those sewers. What failed in this case are the, the stormwater laterals that are shallow, kind of coming out of the individual intersections. And those, those were not televised, haven't been televised, because we've known that Main Street's on the near-term horizon, and all those are scheduled to be completely torn out as part of the Main Street project. So, those were never anticipated to be kept, so they weren't televised because they weren't going to be kept. So we only televised those things that we knew we were going to keep, and then we were going to rehabilitate those things that needed to be rehabilitated.
And apparently, they were working really well. Too well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay.
Committee reports, community development. Alderman Brown?
If my internet worked, I could tell you when the next meeting is. I know we have a J-Cow tomorrow night. Historic Preservation will be coming up next Monday at 5:30, and that's all I have. Plan Commission is canceled for this week, I think. Remember seeing? Yes. Plan Commission has been canceled for this week.
Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
There's a J-Cow meeting tomorrow. I do not see any public utility items on the agenda, so there'll probably be something for the next committee meeting, but other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. City Services, we got anything under that one?
That would be me. J-Cow meeting tomorrow night. We'll be discussing the Baptist Church feasibility study. We'll be talking about granting an acceptance of stormwater easement on Kirk Road, and we'll also be discussing a memorandum of understanding between Department of Energy and the City of Batavia regarding drainage improvements and fu-
to the J-Cow, we'll see, we're waiting for some, actually for some data from the developer himself. We'll have an update on our efforts to sell the city-owned property at Wilson and Kirk at an executive session next week. We have a meeting this Wednesday with KDOT regarding Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway and accesses for the future, as well as, including this lot, but access up to the north, and how the project at, you know, the, the project at Fabian and Kirk Road may impact some of our properties. Peggy Colby will be presenting the financial sustainability portion of the strategic plan on August twentieth. And lastly, I think you're aware, we've had a significant stormwater problem at the intersection of Main Street and Batavia Avenue where a stormwater manhole was completely washed out and created a void under the street about ten feet deep and large enough to fill a car. So our crews have been in there working on that, it should be totally completed by Friday with new paving and finally the intersection will be open. And that's all I have. And we're experimenting with the furniture rearrangement, we had some comments and we're just looking to see how you feel about those, tried to move these seats back so that everybody could see people working at the rostrum here and so that the whole council could kind of interact with the staff and any comments, I guess we can try it for a couple of weeks, a couple of meetings and you see how you feel about it. I'm certain if we had a meeting where there was a significant public hearing or something, we would probably move the tables out and move citizens up, so that's all I have.
Any questions, the administrator?
Bill?
Yeah.
On the Main Street and Wilson Street, what's going on, or Main Street and Batavia Avenue, what's going on over there? Are we going to be, because of what's happened, are we going to be doing any further televising up or downstream to see, I mean, this is a very, very old combination sewer there that...
Frankly, we, we really don't have the resources to tele, actually televise every stormwater pipe in the city. They try to, when they do repairs, I hate to say it, but for the most part, it's when an issue happens, it gets treated. I had the very same discussion with Gary Home, we could talk about it at the budget to let you know kind of what, what would be required to do something like that, I think we're not happy with that. But that's, that's what I've been told at the moment, but we'll get back and, you know, respond to that, okay?
Yeah, I think we, we can talk about it more at committee level, but I think it's something, you know, it's a very old...
There you are.
Very old system, and you know, we're trying to be proactive in other areas of town as we just approved tonight, up in the other area of the city, the northeast corner of the town, and with this being, I mean, if that, if that system fails, we're hurting because that's a main interceptor there, right?
Yeah, let me...
Yeah, the combination sewer in that area along of all of Main Street was televised in 2011. So the actual mainline sewers have been televised and we know the condition of those sewers. What failed in this case are the stormwater laterals that are shallow, kind of coming out of the individual intersections. And those, those were not televised, haven't been televised, because we've known that Main Street's on the near-term horizon and all those are scheduled to be completely torn out as part of the Main Street project, so, those were never anticipated to be kept, so they weren't televised because they weren't going to be kept. So we only televised those things that we knew we were going to keep and then we were going to rehabilitate those things that needed to be rehabilitated.
And apparently they were working really well. Too well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, committee reports, community development, Alderman Brown?
Well, if my internet worked, I could tell you when the next meeting is, I know we have a J-Cow tomorrow night. Historic preservation will be coming up next Monday at 5:30, and that's all I have. Plan Commission is canceled for this week, I think, remember seeing? Yes, Plan Commission has been canceled for this week.
Public utilities, Alderman Clark?
There's a J-Cow meeting tomorrow, I do not see any public utility items on the agenda, so there'll probably be something for the next committee meeting, but other than that I have nothing else, thank you.
Okay, city services, we got anything under that one?
That would be me. J-Cow meeting tomorrow night, we'll be discussing the Baptist Church feasibility study, we'll be talking about granting an acceptance of stormwater easement on Kirk Road, and we'll also be discussing a memorandum of understanding between Department of Energy and the City of Batavia regarding drainage improvements and future maintenance responsibilities in, with regard to Fermileb.
Your Honor, I should mention that at tomorrow night's J-Cow meeting, we're having some more discussion on the Baptist Church property. As we all know, there was a public house, public open house on that last week and very well-attended, and Gary Home put a memo out with a bunch of options and things to consider on it, so there'll be some discussion on that tomorrow night.
Which was a, I'd like to just say that was a very good memo, thank you, Gary. Very complete.
Government services, Alderman Stark?
Thank you, there's nothing on tomorrow night's agenda for government service.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have other business?
I'd like to just say a couple of things, Saturday night, I went to, my wife and daughter and some friends were invited to Navy Pier, and we went to the Gumbay Bash, and that's a fundraiser for the H Foundation, which is affiliated with Northwestern Hospital for cancer research. This gentleman, friend of mine, he's in the first ward on Pleasant Street, his name is Jeff Thildgen, he raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in donations to be raffled off for, for this, this event, and so he made quite, quite a large sum of money towards cancer research. And at the table, there was, must have been a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty tables seating ten people at each table, a lot more people there than that even, but on every table was a nice bottle of wine, an expensive bottle of Italian wine donated by Aliano's. So I just wanted to bring forward that, you know, Mario at Aliano's is, you know, doing good things even outside the city, I thought, I'd like to recognize him for that, and also obviously my friend Jeff Thildgen, first ward resident for all his, and he's on the Board of Directors for the Gumbay Bash and the H Foundation, so just wanted to recognize those two gentlemen.
Okay, anybody else? Under the mayor's report tonight, I just want to take a couple of minutes and tell you a couple of stories about visitors I've had at the Batavia City Hall in the last few weeks here, because I think it's going to point out to a trend that we're going to experience in the Batavia community. When I'm coming in the door, or I'm in, I'm up in the office and the receptionist knows I'm here, if somebody shows up and they have questions that nobody else can answer, if Bill or the staff isn't around, they normally feel free to buzz me and I'll run out and chit-chat with them. In this case, four of these people, or three of these, four, three of the four of the people that I'm going to talk about, I ran into them out in the hallway, or they were kind of wandering around outside or whatever have you. And it was interesting who these people were, because they were four different families, and they had one thing in common, and that's, all four of them are moving into Batavia in the next few weeks, and they were here because the families had just bought houses here and they're going to be moving in here. And the towns that they came from are Sharonville, Ohio, which is suburban Cincinnati, Rossville, Illinois, which is just north of Danville down on Route One, Alexandria, Minnesota, which is, as I'm understanding it, is kind of southern-central Minnesota, and Platteville, Wisconsin, which is up in the southwestern corner of the state of Wisconsin. Now, these were all very nice people, and the interesting thing is, is that they are bringing with them, one family has three children, another has five, another has four, and another has three. So that's fifteen kids that we're about to add to the Batavia school system. Now, the interesting phenomenon of this thing is, is that they came down here looking for me because they had questions about the schools, and so I asked a couple of them, how did you decide that you could come to the mayor and ask the question? And they said, well, there, two of them were staying out at Country Suites on Fabian Parkway, and they turned on the TV and they saw Ron Emanuel in there doing something with the Chicago school system, so they thought in Illinois that the mayor of the town was in charge of the school system. So, and then I had another one call today that had a park district issue, and it was the same thing, she thought that the mayor of the town was in charge of the park district because she had seen TV with Ron Emanuel doing something with the Chicago park district. So interestingly, this is another story, I was with Ron Emanuel last Wednesday in Chicago, and I shared with him my observation that, you know, he's given me more business than most other people because of all the things he's got his hands into. But I, I just wanted to share with you that the questions that came up, the, one family is, is apparently going to live down on the southwest side of town, and their question was, where can, if, they had some children that are going to go to the middle school and they wanted to know where the bus stop was. So obviously the people they needed to go talk to was the school district, but they came to the mayor. Another person was going to be moving into the, to the fourth ward, and they had some, some teacher questions, and again, they needed to go to the school district. But perhaps the most interesting question was, is that one couple that showed up was buying a house out in Mill Creek, and they, with their Realtor, and apparently the Realtor couldn't answer the question, and they got, they were, their house is going to be addressed Geneva, Illinois, because they were moving into Mill Creek, but they were told that their kids were going to go to Batavia schools. And I said, well, I know enough about this to tell you that that's all true, that if you live in one of the nineteen-hundred houses that's in Mill Creek, that you are addressed Geneva, and there are, I believe it's four-hundred-and-four houses that are at the south end of Mill Creek subdivision down by Main Street, and those four-hundred houses go to the Batavia school district. So that was the one question I could answer for these people as to how you get to, you know, why you live in Geneva but your kids go to school in Batavia, well, there's an answer for that. But what I found interesting was the volume of new children that we have coming into the Batavia school system, and I, I included some comments about this in my coming column in Neighbors Magazine that I wrote, that I also included about Alderman Schmitz, because I'm, I am sincerely interested in how many new people are suddenly moving into Batavia, and we're doing this at a time when we're not building any new houses. So these people aren't buying new houses, but they're buying a lot of older houses that are, they're either refurbishing or refinishing. And almost all of them that I've talked to make the comment that they were very impressed with the quality of construction of the older housing stock in Batavia, and I got to tell you, I think that goes back to the old Swedish Scandinavian carpenters that built a lot of the houses in Batavia a hundred years ago, that the houses were well-built and they're easy to, to this day, they're still easy to repair and renovate and bring back, because a lot of these folks are coming, but I, I shared with the school superintendent recent, the new school superintendent recently, that I'm, I'm predicting that the Batavia school district in September is going to have a significant enrollment increase over what they had when they left the school year this year, and that I'll be real interested to see what the numbers are, because having access to the real estate data that I do, I can tell you there's a number of houses that are on the market that are currently listed for sale in Batavia, but if you get into the nitty-gritty of it, many of them are still, are under contract, so there's still a bunch of people going to be moving in here that we don't, we haven't even seen yet. And so I think we've got an interesting new trend that's kind of emerging here of, and the interesting thing about it is, is that most of the, the foreclosures and the short-sale properties that were out there in Batavia over the last two or three years, and that became kind of a, a drag-down on the real estate market, most of those have been evaporated or absorbed in this, this new movement in here. But the common thread, when you sit here and talk to these people about why are, why did you come to Batavia, what's, you know, there's, at most instances, it's job transfer that they're coming in the Chicago area, they want to be near the train station, they want to be near I-88, or in several of these instances, they're got jobs locally in some of our industrial buildings out west of town, or east of town. Every one of them will tell you, well, we got on the computer and we looked at the test scores and the records on the Batavia school system, and we were really impressed, and so we decided this is the town we wanted to move to. So, you know, I got to tell you, I think that the Batavia school district, you know, maybe becomes a victim of its own success here to some degree, and it's kind of an odd way of saying it, but they have a lot of people that seem to want to come in here because of the quality of the education that I think all of us recognize exists in the Batavia school system. The other visitors I've had here was, is a week ago Friday on the, let's see what date was that, on the twenty-sixth of July, for three hours, I toured around King Harris and Nancy Furfer, who are executives with the Metropolitan Planning Council in the city of Chicago. And they are the ones, are part of the group that's going to be doing the collaborative housing study that Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, and North Aurora are embarking upon. And they are kind of the upper tier of executives in this, but they have been out, they came out to tour Batavia and see what our housing stock was, and I felt very good after I did this, because quite frankly, these two have, King Harris is a retired Chicago executive, and he kind of retired from business and got into the MPC, the Metropolitan Planning Council, and got into a serious study of housing trends in suburban Chicago and in the city, so he's been in almost most cities and most neighborhoods in the region, and Nancy Furfer, who works as his assistant, is the former mayor of Glenview, Illinois, and it was during her tenure as mayor that they built the Glen Housing Project on the Glenview Naval Air Station up in Glenview. So I had some people here that were pretty significant in the housing world as far as knowing what's going on. At the end of the tour, they told me that they felt that the housing mixture that we have in Batavia was perhaps as good as any city in the entire Chicagoland region, that when I could take them and show them that we had mobile homes, that we had a variety of townhouses, that we had all this older housing stock that had been nicely rehabbed, that we had institutions like Bellevue Place where we had taken a historic building and to save it, we had surrounded it with, you know, newly constructed enlarged townhomes that were seen to be very nice, that we had housing prices at all ranges. They seemed particularly impressed with Georgetown, right across the street from Batavia High School, because as they pointed out to me as we kind of toured it, each one of the phases of Georgetown kind of represented a different architecture, a different style, and a different design and manner, and they thought it just offered a really nice opportunity. They were very complimentary about the Mill Street area over off of McKee Street where you have the townhouses that are all attached and how nicely maintained everything was, the standard of maintenance that we enjoy in Batavia and the older neighborhoods, and they also made reference that, you know, if you come to Batavia, it becomes honestly an architectural study of American building practices, because if you start at the Fox River and you go either east or west, you can almost go block by block by block, and as they pointed out, as you move away from the river a few blocks, you can see the differing, differing styles of architecture that emerged in America over the last one-hundred-and-fifty years, that if you're on North Washington Avenue or Lincoln Street, you're probably in a hundred-year-old plus neighborhood, and if you got out to, you know, College Street or Mallory on the west side, you're probably in a seventy-five-year-old neighborhood, and if you got out a little bit further, you were in newer, and they said, you know, you could bring students of architecture out here and you could study Batavia, and you literally could see the emerging trends of American architectural style and design change as you look at our, our community. So I just, they kind of blew my head up, they, they made me feel very good about the job that we've done here at the city council in, in bringing forth the housing project, projects that we did, but they were mostly very, also another comment I would tell you is, they, while it's not there, I showed them the former Furnace Electric property at the corner of McKee and Van Orchrick, and indicated that you had chosen to take that and rezoned it into residential housing, which will, would allow for a mixture of housing styles and designs to go in there. They thought that was one of the greatest adaptive reuses of a, of a neighborhood that obviously has transitioned into largely an upper-scale residential neighborhood of a variety of styles, and that what we were going to attempt to do when that happens is kind of fill that one hole in there that exists because of the teardown of the old factories. So they were nothing but totally complimentary toward the actions of the city council, and these are folks that have probably been in well over two-hundred towns in the Chicago area and seen how other communities have designed, redesigned, redeveloped and designed their communities, and they couldn't have paid many more higher compliments to us than they did. So I just wanted to share that with you, that we did get some pats on the back, and I was very pleased that, you know, we got such nice accolades for what we were doing here. So sometimes you sit here and think, well, nobody's paying any attention, but you bring some people in from the outside who don't have any connection at all, and they look at what's going on here and they say, you know, you've really got some innovative ideas going here. In fact, they, they suggested to me when it was over with that they thought maybe at some point in time, some places that were really struggling to figure out what they needed to do, they asked me if I would be willing to be a tour guide and they'd bring some of these other towns out here to see what we were doing in Batavia with housing. So I didn't realize we were that strong in housing, but we did get a lot of very strong accolades from people who this is their full-time job now is to study housing in the Chicagoland region. Alderman Brown, you want to make a comment?
Very interesting comments you just made there, and I just wanted to throw one more out, too, I was standing out in front of my house the other night, and a couple walked by, so of course I said hi to them, and we sat and had a conversation, and they had just moved into the neighborhood, so they were in my ward, and they'd just moved in a month ago. And so of course, you know, I, well, why did you, why did you pick Batavia? And they said, well, there's three, three reasons why, second marriage, first marriage for the husband, he's got a child in Geneva, lives in Geneva, they live in Woodbridge, these, this couple lived in Woodbridge, so they wanted to get closer to the child, but there were three reasons, so I says, well, what, what are the other two reasons? Well, the school district is probably the best we, we could find, they've got a five-year-old and an eight-year-old that are going to live with them here in town, and the third reason was what they see Batavia doing with their downtown, which I found very interesting as you might imagine. They said that they actually got on the website, checked the school scores with the school website, and then they got on the city Batavia website and saw what we were planning with all of our downtown streetscapes and things like that. So they said that those were the three reasons why they chose Batavia. So he's self-employed, he didn't come here because of his employment, and I found that very interesting, so I just wanted to share that, too.
Well, I just want to conclude by saying that, you know, this is a, I mean, I think this is a pretty powerful force that's coming in here, I mean, I think this is bigger than what many people to this point in time realize, and, you know, I think this is a real deal, as I guess we would say in the real estate world, and one of the things I feel like, you know, I, we, we did the economic development director tonight, and I think that's really an important aspect right now, because I think we really need to set ourselves up with some pretty strong property tax base that's going to support the school system, and I'm not so sure, you know, housing is, we're getting, we're selling ourselves because of the schools, but I think those schools are going to need the financial support and help, so, you know, if we can talk about building, you know, factories and doing redevelopment downtown and stuff on Randall Road, that's all going to contribute tax dollars to the Batavia system, school system, the, the more the merrier and the better off I think we will be in the long haul, so I, I just feel like we should have a renewed emphasis on that whole thing, because the schools, I think, are about to really get significantly hammered by this growth thing that's happening when you're not even building any new houses, but it's a, a grabbing of the existing housing stock and really filling it out, so, something for us to ponder in the days ahead. Okey-dokey, I think that's all I want to pontificate about for the moment. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn the city council meeting.
Moved by Brown, second by O'Brien, Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.